All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the May 20th, 2024 Town Council meeting to order. If everyone could just please stand, I'm going to ask Councilwoman Moranti to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. All right, so on tonight's agenda, we have no presentations, so we can move right to item number two. We have two public hearings tonight, and I will ask, or please ask the town clerk to read the call to the public hearings.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold public hearings at 7:00 p.m. on Monday, May 20th, 2024, in the council chambers of the municipal center, Plainville, to hear public comments regarding: Item 1, Proposals for the 2024 Neighborhood Assistance Act; and 2, An Additional Appropriation of $574,925 to the Capital Improvement Plan dated at Plainville, Connecticut, the 16th day of May, 2024.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we want to just give a brief synopsis of the two? I know we've talked about them both now, a couple meetings, but...
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I could explain and just briefly read a summary of the Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act. The Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program is run by the State Department of Revenue Service and is designed to provide funding for tax-exempt organizations. This is done by providing a tax credit to business firms that make cash contributions to qualifying community programs conducted by tax-exempt entities. Interested tax-exempt organizations must submit a Neighborhood Assistance Act program proposal. The program proposal must first be received by the municipality in which the programs are conducted. The proposals must then go to public hearing for comment and consideration. Only after the governing body has voted to approve a proposal is it then submitted to the Department of Revenue Services by the municipality. And so that's where we are this evening, in that step of hearing public comment for them. I believe we have three. The Neighborhood Assistance Act proposal by the Chrysalis Center, Hart House Energy Conservation Project, the amount of $51,900. The next is the Prudence Crandall Center Energy Efficiency, the amount of $42,060, and the Prudence Crandall Center for Annual Appeal, in the amount of $150,000. Those are the three applications received by the town of Plainville.
All right. Why don't we just, let me... I'll just ask, is there anyone that wishes to speak to the Neighborhood Assistance Proposals? Yes? Yep, just step to the... Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please, step to the podium, name and address. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. Just make sure you turn the speaker on, it'll be a big button. There you go.
Perfect. My name is Chelsea Logan. Do you want my own personal address, or...?
Yes.
Okay. I am at 14 Breton Road in West Hartford, Connecticut. As I said, my name is Chelsea Logan. I am here representing the Chrysalis Center in regards to our NIA application. I want to thank you all for allowing me time to speak tonight. We are a multi-service nonprofit organization with programs focusing in supportive and affordable housing, food insecurity, and helping individuals struggling with mental illness and substance use disorders. Chrysalis serves individuals and families throughout the state of Connecticut. We help those living in poverty, veterans, men, women, children, and young adults who are struggling with mental health, addiction, HIV/AIDS, and those returning from incarceration and homelessness. One of our programs in Plainville, St. Philip House, helps individuals and families with HIV/AIDS to obtain safe, affordable housing. This building and housing program is going through a gut rehab to benefit the participants. The housing units... Sorry, I lost my place here. The participants who are currently housed there have been relocated to different housing units throughout the state, and we will be reopening this unit as Hart House, helping elderly who are coming out of homelessness with affordable housing. The Hart House Energy Conservation Project encompasses the removal of existing antiquated parking lot and exterior perimeter security lighting with the replacement of new, state-of-the-art, energy-efficient lighting. The replacement of the existing lighting will result in the improvement of all the exterior lighting. Oh my gosh, I'm so sorry. Sorry. Assuring low energy costs as well as less energy consumption, reducing energy bills considerably. This is an energy conservation project, allowing us to considerably cut costs to better help our clients and provide more funding for programming. An added benefit to this energy-efficient lighting will be the improvement of the safety and security for Hart House for the residents, visitors, and employees. Thank you so much. We hope to gain your support in this project. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Nope, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate you being here. All right, is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the Neighborhood Assistance Act public hearing? All right, seeing no one, why don't we get a little information about our second public hearing tonight?
The second one is the additional appropriation in the amount of $574,925 from the general fund unassigned balance, moving $204,925 to the inter-fund transfer out and $370,000 to the inter-fund transfer out. Certainly, the Finance Director, Rob Budin, is here as well if you have any questions about the detail.
All right, before I open up for public comment, anyone have any questions, any specific questions? All right, so at this point, once again, we'll open it up to public comment. Please step forward to the podium, give your name and address. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. Anyone that wishes to comment on the additional appropriation? All right, seeing no one, we will close that public hearing. And that concludes item number two. We can move on to item number three, minutes of the previous meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Christopher.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 6th, 2024 regular meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions, changes, comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would need to abstain from voting on this because I was absent.
Okay.
Okay, just letting you know.
All right, any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item four, announcements and reports. Any announcements or reports this evening?
Mr. Chair? Yeah.
Councilwoman Moranti.
I did attend three meetings as a liaison from the Town Council. First of all, back on the 8th of May, I was at Conservation Commission. They were very pleased to hear that the Town Council had approved our registration in Sustainable CT. The commission will be taking, you know, the major role in that initiative. They had river cleanup on May 4th, and it was a great success. It was down in the Piquabic River area, and they'll be back there next fall. And as part of the Connecticut Trails Weekend, the first weekend of June, the Conservation Commission will be leading a hike to Pinnacle Rock, starting at 10:00 a.m., and I think there'll be information on their page on the Town website, if anybody would like to join them. Went to Committee on Aging on May 9th. One of the announcements that was made was that the renovations in the kitchen and the café area are being completed. And also, they were in the process, that week, of finishing the grant submission for their annual transportation grant, which pays part of the cost for the dial ride. And then last week, I was at Library Board of Trustees. You know, and as part of their strategic planning process, which I've mentioned before, the trustees officially adopted a new mission/vision/value statement and new goals and objectives. And as I've mentioned previously, this initiative, in terms of strategic planning, is not being done in isolation. They're part of a cohort working through the Connecticut Library Consortium. And just as a special note, you may recall, a number of months ago, they did a survey. People could do it either, I think, believe in paper as well as online. And in their cohort, Plainville by far had the most responses to the survey. So that says something about our folks here in Plainville and participating in giving public input.
All right, thank you. Anyone else with an announcement or a report? I don't know if talking about the parade is an announcement or a report. I don't know if a member of the committee wants to just talk about a reminder about Monday, or... I can do it certainly, but Councilwoman Christopher looks like she wants to speak.
Monday is the Memorial Day Parade. We're all very excited and have been working a lot to get this organized, but we're very excited. So it's Monday, and it starts at 9:00 a.m., so everyone better be there.
Very good.
I'd better see you all there.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The manager put out a great one-minute moment in regards to the parade. If you haven't seen it to the public, please take a look at the Plainville website.
All right. Yes, that was...
It was very good. Just one more thing. This year, we're going to have the stilt guy, the guy on stilts, I think he's 10 feet 12. And believe it or not, he walks the whole perimeter of that parade. I mean, when he's done, they have to take him away in an ambulance to straighten his legs out. A really big ambulance. And we're going to have some clowns this year for the kids. So I think it's going to be a really good parade, a really nice parade.
Clowns starting out.
Yeah, right?
Very good, thank you.
That's the council, am I correct?
Well, we'll talk about that at the next meeting. All right, anything else from anyone? We do have, under item five, appointments and resignations. We do have some appointments tonight.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Tompkins.
Motion to appoint Javier Martinez, 8 Irving Street, as an alternate member of Zoning Board of Appeals for term ending October 1st, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And just before I go to item two, we do still have a couple openings for alternates.
Two more additional...
Two alternate positions for Zoning Board of Appeals. So if anyone out there is interested or just interested in getting more information about the committee, please, you can call the Town Manager's Office. They will be happy to give you more information, but we are looking for a couple more people on that particular commission. So item number two.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Underwood.
Motion to appoint Emma Donovan, 7 Mountain View Drive, as a probationary firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item B.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Motion to appoint Dana Wayne, 16 Whiting Street, as a probationary firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
Another motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. I know there's no other pending appointments, but are there any other appointments or resignations? All right, we will... The Board of Ed chair was not able to be here tonight, so we will move right to item seven, Report of the Town Attorney.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a very brief report. As you know, I've had some discussions with the Town Manager and with the council regarding his contract, and those discussions will be ongoing. And in the meantime, as I've advised everyone not to have any public comment until we're done. We'll be reporting back at the next meeting. Thank you.
All right. Any comments or questions for the Town Attorney? Okay, we will move now to item eight, Report of the Town Manager.
Yes, good evening. Item number one is revisiting the issue with Pine Meadow Condominium Association, the request for rebate. There's additional information, but I'll just kind of recap throwing the information that came in from the association, requesting a tax rebate from the town based on the claim that they provide the public benefit to the community in terms of a walkway and easement, and that the president of the association has indicated that this is a requirement that they can now be open to the public because of its historical significance and public access be required for trail walkers and bird watchers. And what we discussed, I had discussed when they came in to sit down, was a rebate that would be $36,000 rebate, paid out over 10 years as just a starting point. We've continued to look and research and try to answer any questions that the council may have. As you recall, their counter was to have $16,000 paid up in the first year. And that what has transpired since then is additional information with respect, I think Shetal had received the public access easement and a description or map. And I want to thank the Town Planner, Mark DeVoe, for his assistance. He was able to join myself and Councilor Moranti, who had requested a site walk and visit just to orient herself with that and for my benefit as well. And so we did that last week, and we had a chance to walk and see it. And I can tell you that it is very, in my opinion, very minimal. It is a very short distance, a very short path, and has become overgrown, obviously, without maintenance, and there's no marker. So without Mark telling me, hey, stop here, and we'll get out, I think you just, you literally would drive right by it and not even though it's there. And again, I wasn't here in 2005 when all of this took place, and the contractor who's named in here and the conditions that they were set forth and the easement provided that. But I'm happy to obtain any additional information or try to answer any more questions that the council has. It's not an action item per se for this evening. The council, as a regular meeting, could amend the agenda and add it to the agenda for action, but my understanding was it wasn't quite ready yet for action. Was looking to gather as much information as we could on this item and this topic before taking any action on the request. So I hope I've covered, at this point, covered everything that I think we can find. And Mark was, you know, going through the files to find the easement and the map and so forth. Then I think, I can't speak for Councilor Moranti, but I think for me, it was an eye-opener in terms of actually being on site to see it. So that's all I have, is additional information at this point.
Well, I just, I don't, if you have any comments, but I was just going to say, I think we've gotten all the information we need, and I'll let Councilwoman Moranti speak for herself, but do you have anything?
I was just going to say that receiving the actual copy of what was agreed to in 2005 is very helpful. Obviously, the easement itself was agreed to at that time, and there was no mention of any, you know, monetary ramification. But it also does refer to the maintenance things. And having that information, I think we can narrow down better the factors that would lead to making any decision on this, yeah. So that was very helpful. And seeing it was very helpful as well.
Yeah.
So, you know, my comments are just, you know, I think we've gotten all the information we're going to get and, you know, over the next meeting or two. I know Councilman Hurley and I talked a little bit about this before the meeting started, but my anticipation, unless anyone objects, is, you know, whether it's the first or second meeting in June, to kind of handle this as a council and take a vote. So with that, and obviously, when we set agendas, we'll talk about it more. But that's, I think, the game plan going forward. Everyone's comfortable with that?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, just one question?
Yeah.
Did we ever find out if and when the town ever did maintain? And if they did, when did it stop?
Yes, I, if I'm, I'll defer to Mark to confirm, but I believe it was three to possibly four years after that maintenance stopped, I believe. So they did it, I think, for the first three years, maybe longer, but definitely for the first three years. And then after the town stopped maintaining, my understanding is that the associates then had the marker removed.
Of the marker, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So really, it would, unless you know what you're looking for, it's hard to say. And there is, so there's two sides of the, well, the roadway in and over the canal to the other apartments, I mean, other homes. You have a section on the right, and on the other side, there's also signage that indicates that, you know, the swamp is here and private property is here. So I think it's, when you see that, it's not a defined trail. And so I'm not sure how anybody is really going to take advantage of that, but it's there, and I think that's just a leftover. But you can't really see it. I mean, you really have to be looking for it. So I think, you know, I can talk with Mark again about that and get a better answer for you. But I think it was after three to four years, max, that they stopped.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mike, when you and Rosemary walked a path, did it seem like the path had even been used in...
Well, it's hard to say. My sense is that there are members within the community of the condo association community that might, you know, walk it. But again, it's like a path to nowhere.
Right.
You know, it's just like an up and back. And it, and for me, you know, for my visual inspection of the canal itself, it's like I really, unless I, you know, read about and knew about the history, I kind of wouldn't say like, okay, that's a canal. It just kind of looks like any other, you know, water course is so grown in, you know? It's not like you would see in pictures or the locks or, you know, anything very defined. I defer to Councilor Moranti, but from my vantage point, it's just overgrown and really kind of lack the definition that you would think of when you visualize a canal.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I would say it doesn't have like the definition, so that would be a good word, that the stretches of the restored canal in Norton Park would have, you know? And one thing we've talked about, it's kind of getting off the subject, and I know that I mentioned it to our assistant Town Manager too, is we probably have to work on getting that sign restored at Norton Park, the one for the canal that's really faded over the years. But that's something we have to get working on it, yeah.
All right. I think we're all set to move on to Whiting Street.
Okay, yes, an update on number, item two, Whiting Street Reconstruction Project. On May 2nd, 2024, the Engineering Department received five bid proposals for the Whiting Street Reconstruction Project. The scope of the project involves reconstruction of Whiting from Broad Street to North Street. The bid proposals range from $2.2 million to $3.2 million. The engineer's estimate value of construction activities was $2.3 million. The lowest responsible bidder submitted an amount of $2,279,740, and that was by Colosseal Site Works of Berlin. I hope I'm pronouncing that right. The Engineering Department has reviewed the submitted bid documents and has determined it to be complete as submitted. So Colosseal Site Works has completed similar work in Plainville in the past, roadside walk construction, downtown improvements, and has previously demonstrated that they can competently perform such work as outlined in the contract. And the Engineering Department deems Colosseal Site Works to be the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $2,279,740,000. The costs of construction activities will be paid from the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation LOTSIP grant. And there is an item under New Business to award bid 2023-16E, Whiting Street Reconstruction Project to Colosseal Site Works in the amount of $2,279,740,000. Item three is the Police Department Building Improvement Update. The Police Department is proposing to renovate existing interior spaces to create a roll call and training room. This project would include design, demolition, materials, utilities, labor, and furniture, fixtures, and equipment, FF and E. And the town proposes utilizing the EZ IQ Job Order Contracting Program available through the Capital Regional Purchasing Council, the CRPC, of which the town holds membership. The contractor selected through a competitive bidding process is Millennium Builders, Inc. Millennium Builders, under Work Order 124456, proposed to complete the scope of work at a total cost of $64,968,000. And there is an item under New Business to award bid 2024-19, the Plainville Police Department Building Improvements to Millennium Buildings, excuse me, Millennium Buildings, Inc. of Rocky Hill, Connecticut, under CRPC's EZ IQ program, in the amount of $64,968,000. And I will pause there in case there are any questions. The chief is here this evening, our police chief, to answer any questions you may have regarding that project.
Any specific, I'm sorry, any specific questions for the police chief or the Town Manager? I know we got some information prior to the meeting. Is everyone comfortable? Okay. Well, thank you for being here. Maybe, I wouldn't leave just yet. Thank you. And just, can I go back just real quick to the Whiting Street?
Sure.
Does the reconstruction include like the intersection of Broad and Whiting? I know, like coming, if you're crossing Whiting, you know...
Yes, we're going to do, we're going to do as much as we can in terms of making improvements to the intersection of Broad and Whiting. And likely that the timing will, well, it's already in process, but from a planning standpoint and actually getting out there, I think that the engineer is looking at after the July 4th holiday. So he wanted, I think, was...
That was my next question, is any idea when...
They're not going to start before Monday, right?
Well, that's the thing, yeah. So it's not going to start and then stop and shut it, that kind of thing. So, yeah, so it should work, it should work fine. From a scheduling standpoint, they'll do the best that they can and obviously work as a, obviously, a heavily trafficked area and full of business as well. Try to do what we can to maintain access and traffic through there.
There'll be a lot of people happy to see that.
Yeah, it'll be busy and messy. It'll be disruptive, for sure. But that's what we've got to deal with in order to get it done.
Okay. All right, any other questions regarding the Whiting Street or the Police Department improvements? All right, I think we're ready for item four.
Item four is the Appointment of the Auditor. This is an annual appointment. The Connecticut General Statute requires the municipality to notify the Secretary of the Office of Policy and Management of independent auditor appointment to perform the audit. Notification to the state must be made no later than 30 days before the end of the fiscal year. So there is an item under New Business to appoint the firm of Clifton Larson Allen as independent auditors for the 2024 fiscal year. So that is under New Business. Certainly, the, if and when we get to New Business and there are any questions at this point, Rob is here to answer any questions you may have. Item five, Mill Rate. The revised numbers for the adopted State of Connecticut revenue figures came out, and the town gained $284,953 in revenue, of which $284,464 came in for additional ECS grant funding. This changes our proposed mill rates to $32.46 for the motor vehicle state cap and $32.64 for real estate and personal property. And there's an item under New Business to set the mill rate at those figures, $32.46 for motor vehicle and $32.64 for real estate and personal property. And again, the Finance Director is here to answer any questions you may have on the mill rate.
All right, any questions on the mill rate or the numbers that we were provided? Okay. Next.
Next is an item under Open Space. This had not been discussed before, so again, this is new information. And again, if the council feels that there not enough information, I believe there is, there's maps included as well, but we received a request. And then I asked, like any other request for land, it has to go through an 824 referral. I asked, like any other request for land, it has to go through a 824 referral, so I passed it on to Planning and Zoning and asked them to undertake a review in this offer to donate open space off of Field Street in accordance with Section 824 of the Connecticut General Statute. So on May 24th, 2024, they did so, and accordingly, they passed a unanimous motion to issue a report to the Town Council as follows. The acquisition of open space at Assessor's Lot Number 37-O-11, as shown on the proposed conservation subdivision map, is in accordance with the 2019 Plan of Conservation and Development. This property is currently owned by Danny Carrier. In 2006, the parcel was identified as having a high priority in terms of open space by the duly formed Open Space and Land Acquisition Subcommittee. The town of Plainville owns land to the north and south of this parcel. Therefore, the acquisition would satisfy the recommendation in the plan. While the entire parcel is no longer available, Mr. Carrier has graciously offered the town much of the land at no cost to preserve it in perpetuity as envisioned in the plan. The acquisition would consist of two parcels with a combined area of 12.7 acres. As part of the gift, the town will be asking Mr. Carrier to provide a 15-foot right-of-way to link the two parcels, and he has agreed to do that. So there is an item under New Business to accept the parcel as part of the town's open space. And I realize this is a new item not discussed previously, but hopefully there's enough detailed information in there that council could take action. If not, and we could always push this off to a June meeting.
Any questions? Any comments? Okay. Everyone's comfortable moving forward?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
And just to confirm, and I know I've spoken to you this earlier today on this, the right-of-way would give the public the right to go from one of the open space parcels, walk on the back of the private property, with the 15-foot right-of-way, to the other parcel?
Yes.
They would allow that, yeah.
That is my understanding. You know, obviously confirm with the town planner on that. And as, yes, it's a very small drawing and very fine detail, but you can see that that was, and that obviously isn't our intent, and that is agreeable to the owner to do that. So I'm not sure how much activity will be in the two parcels that we get, but that I think would be.
And just sort of as a geographic feature, that's right along the beginnings of the Quinnipiac River also, which makes it kind of neat to have the public access, yeah. We forget sometimes that the Quinnipiac really, you know, begins in this area. And, yeah, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Rosemary, I was, I'm the liaison to the planning and zoning, so I saw it on the big map, and it is very exciting, I think, to see. And it does go along the Quinnipiac. So, yeah, it looks, it's a very generous offer, and I think Planning and Zoning was happy to see it, and I think it should go forward.
Yep, no, I agree. Great.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Next item, item seven is the Financial Dashboard, and I will walk you through that. The numbers look in line, in order. The expenditures, total town expenditures through April 30th are $53,162,935. Represents 78%, 78.1%, which is slightly above the two-year average at 76.99. Breaking that down on the general government side, through April 30th, $20,970,575 expended to date, or through April 30th, excuse me, and that represents 83.89, just a hair above the two-year average at 82.47. On the Board of Education side, $32,192,360,000 spent through April 30th, and that represents 74.74%, slightly above the 73.65 two-year average. So actually, nothing really out of the extraordinary, out of the ordinary there, pretty much in line with what we expect. The next page, in respect to Police Dispatch Overtime Expenditures, a budget of, total budget of $550,000. Expenditures through April 30th are $440,840, representing 80% expended through April 30th. On the roadways, overtime expenditure, the total budget of $132,915. They have expended through April 30th, $109,563, for a 82.43% expended through April 30th. On the building and grounds, a little bit different picture there, and I think I've mentioned before, consistent with the fact that we had the balloon festival, their overtime budget expenditures have run over. Their budget of $51,783 was their total budget for regular and snow overtime. They have spent through April 30th, $64,287, percent expenditure of 124.15%. And much of it, not all of that attributed to the balloon festival. The snow budget really wasn't a factor this year, as we've stated in previous meetings. On the hauler side of solid waste, we are up, but we are down on recycling. So we are just slightly over on tonnage for solid waste, running over the two-year average by 130 tons. On the recycling side, we are running under by 164 tons. So not too much to worry about there. On the revenue side, again, things look normal. From the revenue side, total town revenue through April 30th, $66,294,395. That represents 97.39%. The two-year average, 98.56. On the tax revenue, current tax revenue, $51,411,490, 100%, and over the two-year average of 99.9. So everything looks in line, nothing out of the ordinary. Next page, same thing on the fund balance. That remains unchanged, although the Finance Director has finished up with the audit to be able to confirm those numbers. So the bottom line there will be 14.51% for the estimated unassigned fund balance for June 30th, 2024. And our last, well, excuse me, special revenue funds. We have Recreation Fund first is expenditures through April 30th, $151,090, represents 53.87%, slightly higher than the two-year average at 50.68. On the revenue side for Recreation, collected through April 30th, $117,055,6, which is, represents 60.29% on, received under the two-year average of 100. I think that is just a timing issue with, with the payments that are coming in for the spring and summer programs. We'll confirm that when we take a look at it for the May run and confirm that we're seeing those numbers come up. Robertson Airport, everything in line there. Expended $257,202, taken in revenue of $207,695. There are quite a few projects underway there that we're working on. Most recently is obviously in the middle of a fence project that should be, will wrap up by mid-June. So we have a function and an event happening there in June 22nd, I believe. So we're definitely watching that with a close eye to make sure that gets done. Water Pollution Control Fund is right on target. They spent $4,172,000, and that represents 88.65%, slightly above the two-year average of 86.98%, but they've taken in revenue of $4,702,604, and 112% over the, just under the two-year average of 114. So again, healthy, a healthy fund there, healthy activity with respect to Water Pollution Control Fund. No worries or concerns at that, for that fund at this point. And lastly, the Library Fund, everything there looks normal. They have expended through April 30th, $637,347. It's 80.93% expended, slightly above their two-year average of 77.46, but they've taken in revenue of $762,186, and that represents 96.78%, just slightly under their two-year average of 98.19. So everything in line there. Last is the Major Projects Report, and you'll see there are two new items I want to point out. That is the Honor Heights Sewer Project was added, and the, further down the middle of the page, the Whiting Street Reconstruction Project. So those are, those are new that will, you know, we're kicking off, have kicked off on Honor Heights, obviously, and Whiting Street will be kicking off shortly. So we'll continue to track those. But the Town Line Road Reconstruction has a balance that we've got to figure out, as I've mentioned, and in addition to that, we have Northwest Drive and Wheeler on the bottom, and balances there that we've got to figure out what our direction will be with the state, what our plan of action, or what they'll allow us to do. The Road Bond Project obviously is finishing up this year. We'll have to have a conversation with the council in future meeting to discuss what the next step would be in terms of continuing that program, and more importantly, to what level. Last time out was a, you know, $5 million or $10 million issue, so we can think about that for future meetings. ARPA Funding, we've worked on those numbers, and we'll continue in terms of having further discussions there, but a project balance of $983,820 for ARPA. The turf fund, I'm not quite sure what the direction the council wants to go with that, but there is a balance there. But I just, what I don't know, and I just see the numbers, what I don't know, and I'll have to, you know, find out, is the, where the life cycle is of the turf field and what the projections in terms of the horizon is for that, because, and there's no way those numbers in terms of the balance are going to come even close to what you might need to do there. So I think we need some, some planning on that respect, and have to get a timeline for that. So, but I can do that with, with, with the board of it. And, and that would be it. That would be the end of my report.
All right. So thank you. Any other, I know we took up items kind of as we went, but are there any other additional questions or comments for the town manager? All right, I guess we are up to happenings.
Sounds good.
Good evening.
Good evening. From the Plainville Historical Society, on Wednesday, May 29th, at 6:30 PM, the Historical Society will present Connecticut Military Heroes: Battle of Iwo Jima. Researcher and author Jeff DeWitt will be speaking about his biographical book of 100 people with Connecticut ties who lost their lives at Iwo Jima in 1945. One of those you'll be highlighting is a local hero, Marine Corps Admiral, Marine Corps Armand Robideau, a 1940 graduate of Plainville High School, for whom Robideau Road is named after. The public can register for the event by emailing plvhistorical@gmail.com. From the Plainville Public Library, and for all information on library programs, including registration, you can call the library at 860-793-1446, or visit www.plainvillect.com livery. The Middle School Gaming and Pizza on Wednesday, May 22nd, from 1:30 to 3:30 PM. This is for students, grade six to eight, and attendees are welcome to play board games, cards, video games, while snacking on pizza. You can register through the library's website. The library will be showing a documentary film, Joshua: Teenager vs. Superpower. It's a 2017 film. It's on Wednesday, May 22nd, at 6:00 PM. The film is rated TV14, and the runtime is an hour and 18 minutes. The film is about a teenage activist, Joshua Wong, who mobilized young citizens of Hong Kong to take onto the streets in a bid to preserve their history of autonomy from China. There's no registration necessary. The American Job Center will be onsite on Tuesday, May 28th, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM. No appointment is necessary. A representative from the American Job Center will be available to help answer questions and register individuals through the CT Hire site. Smartphone Photography Workshop on Thursday, June 6th, at 6:00 PM. Andy Mars, a freelance photographer, will present a hands-on workshop covering photo editing techniques and how to take better pictures with a smartphone. Registration is through the library website. How to Write Your Own Story is a six-week writing course. Classes will be held at 6:30 PM on Tuesdays on June 18th and 25th, July 9th, 16th, 23rd, and 30th. It's a six-week summer class, and it's open to adults interested in committing, committing to writing about their lives. The class will be taught by a Plainville resident and publisher/author, Judy Humphrey, and you can register through the library website. And finally, from the Senior Center, and for all information on Senior Center programs, you can call the Senior Center at 860-747-5728. All programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. The Therapeutic Plant Program by Amy Lopez from Bloomware Planted is on Thursday, May 23rd, at 10:00 AM. The cost is $15. The Therapeutic Plant and Nature Program uses natural materials and plants to help improve general wellness in its participants. And you get to take home a plant when you finish the project. Veterans Social Hour on Tuesday, May 28th, at 10:00 AM. These monthly informational sessions and support meetings are conducted by Sherri Voe, the Veterans Liaison for Hartford Healthcare Senior Services, for all veterans over the age of 60 and their spouses. You can call the Senior Center to register. And the last thing is the Goat Party, which is back. We had one in the fall, and we're going to have one again. And I think we should have one every season. It's on Wednesday, May 29th, from 2:00 to 3:00 PM. It's free, and it's at the Norton Park Pavilion. Everyone is invited to pet and feed the goats during this fun experience with Got Your Goat from Washington Depot. You do have to register in advance, so you can go to the Senior Center website to do that, but we hope to see you there. I think the chief was there in the fall. Some good pictures online. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you for your reports and happenings. Unless there's a comment or a question, we'll move to item 11. There's no old business, or I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. How could I skip public comments? How? Would you, I, you know, I, yeah, the town clerk and I had a vet, she won. But no, at this point, we will open up public comments. Anyone that wishes to address the council may do so. Please step forward to the podium, give your name and address. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. The first ring means you have 30 seconds left, and the second ring means your time has run out. Good evening, Marilyn.
Good evening. My name is Marilyn Schreit, 18 Milford Street in Plainville, and I'll give the rest of my time to John. Mine is going to be very brief. I, we have a public parking lot and tree on Maple Street, and I believe there's one right over here across the way. And it has some serious potholes that need addressing. Some are so large, like wheelbarrow size. So if you can address that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Sorry, just finishing writing that up. You can just keep, yeah, you don't need to wait for me to acknowledge you. You know how this works.
I thought you were going to deny me.
John, that is something I don't want, I would never want to deal with.
John Kisluk, 65 Forestville Avenue. You know, the three minutes is too short. I wanted to share last meeting with, with you about some of my experiences when I was urging a no vote at the school project and the budget. I shared some with you and Quinn already. When I was there, the school, the school vote wasn't so bad. I was set up about 30 feet away from the opposition, and they were so good. None of us fought or anything. Actually, one of the people, she had me pose with her for a picture, so we were pretty friendly. The budget was a little different. There were about three negatives. Only one of them bothered me. There was a woman, she was driving in, young woman, and I thought she was waving to me, and I, so I started waving back, and then I really realized she was giving me the one-finger salute. I hope that person is really happy with themselves and pleased with their attitude. Somebody like me just want to express my opinion, and that's what I get. But what made up for it is I had people come up to me and thank me for being there and doing what I'm doing. I even had one lady and her daughter offer to bring me food. They said, you've been standing here all day. Aren't you hungry? So that was really nice. So it was good overall. I would do it again. Next thing I have is, I'm sure all of you have been reading about it. This is the Next thing I have is, I'm sure all of you have been reading about it, this is to renovate its new school projects that Casos de Amadas got indicted, 22-count, by the federal government for bribery and extortion. I have been talking about that a long time in my articles about that program that I still don't like. And there's a person who writes for the Hartford Current, Kevin Reeny. He's a government watchdog. He has an article every Sunday. And he put another one in here. The legislature approved this. Contractors that are overseeing the project work can bid on the work that they are overseeing. And you got to think, who's going to oversee them? This is when you still get corruption in there. Kevin's saying, are these people learned anything, or what? You could have a $25,000 change order. It's going to change. It's going to go to 40, 50, who knows? This program is so bad, that's, these are one of the things with my experiences in there on the committees, and this is one of the reasons I don't like it. The last thing I have, there seemed to be a little bit confusion on the four-day work week. I know in the town hall, just about every department is closed, but I want to know, is the position of Town Manager covered under the four-day work week?
You know, it's funny, I had a conversation with Lou about the same question.
So you wonder why I'm asking?
Well, no, I'm sure you two, you know, talked, and that's fine. And I'll tell him what I told him, you know, if he needs to be here on a Friday, he's here. I've met with him on Fridays, I know he's in the building. I don't know if that's exactly what you're looking for, but to me, and I think his understanding is, he's here when he has to be here regardless.
Right.
You know, I-
Chris, I understand that. I'm not saying the Town Manager's not putting in 80 hours a week. That isn't the thing. I just want to know if his position is covered under the four-day work week. I know the Town Manager-
Yes. As an employee of Town Hall, yes.
Okay, that's, that's all I want to know. I don't, I, I don't have an issue with how you're working it, or the Town Manager coming in once in a while, or like tonight, how long he's going to be here, and whatever. I know he puts in more hours. That's, that's not my argument. I just want to know if it fell under that, and-
Yeah, you know, now I'm double, I just want to double-check on that. And I'll probably ask the, no, really, because I, you know, it, because it's the second time it's come up. But I will, you know, my understanding is, would be yes, but I'll probably just ask for an opinion from the Town Attorney.
Okay. It's all right with me if it does. I don't have a problem with it.
Yep. I just want to make sure I give you factual information.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
And you're not going to get your fantasy of missing public-
I would never, you know, I wouldn't sleep for days if I skipped it. Mr. Frangos, take your time, don't, yeah, don't rush.
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbank Street. And with your permission, could I do something before I start presenting anything? I'm requesting-
Can I ask what you're going to do?
No, 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 I'm not doing anything bad. Before I start, I am requesting the Town Secretary, when entering minutes of the Town Council meeting, specifically public comments, enter briefly what exactly, not exactly, briefly what the town resident presented, and not just discussed various topics. And with this, I will hand this sheet over to the Secretary for today's meeting. And thank you for the leeway. Okay, I'm starting now. Let me start by citing Chapter 4 of the Plainville Town Charter. At the time of the appointment, the manager, being the Town Manager, may not be the resident of the town or the state, but during the tenure of office, the manager shall reside in Plainville. We are reaching two years in office, and as of yet, the Town Manager does not reside in Plainville. Which, by the way, during a recent town election, residents want the Town Manager to be a Plainville resident. Compounding the issue, and this is a question, is the town committed to paying the Town Manager, and I've heard the number, $600 in gasoline money to commute to Plainville?
Yeah, I, that one, I don't know the answer to that one. We could get the answer for you, though.
You don't know, you don't. And it's here-
Do you want an answer to that?
Or if you can do it.
Well, I mean, I can't do it right now, maybe, but we can-
If you can do that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
But yeah, it's not earth-shattering, it's just general information. And, and gasoline money to commute. And is he, is in, or, and this is important, and is he in or not in his Plainville office the fifth day of the week?
I am going to take advice of the Town Attorney and not comment at all on this. All I will say is, we did meet earlier tonight under executive session to begin discussions about the residency requirement.
I'm, I'm sorry, bear with me, I'm not trying to be, cause a problem here. Why can't you answer my question as a Town Council Chair, and why do we need an attorney at this point?
Well, I don't, I, I, right now, we are looking at this. The advice I've received from the Town Attorney is that we really shouldn't be discussing this in public at this point. We, the council's aware of the point you brought up. We are addressing it, but we do need more time before we can give an answer.
And I respect that. The only question, the only problem I have with this is, when the man took the position, he is supposed to be in Plainville. If you're working on something to resolve that issue, I have no problem with that. I don't care if he stayed in Willamette, in this particular case, Willamette. But right now, according to the contract that was signed, he is supposed to be, as I understand, and I stand to be corrected, he's supposed to be in Plainville, and that doesn't mean you don't go working to resolve that issue, according to contract. Now, maybe I've misread a contract, but that's another story. Okay, with that said.
You have time for like one more comment?
Huh?
Your timer ran out, but if you have one more comment you want to make, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you for that. My questions regarding the past, regard, my questions are, are simple. Can the Town Council Chairman explain why? Explain what is this elected Town Council is doing after two years to explain and/or resolve the issues? And that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, short answer is no. I'm not at liberty at this point. This council's only been dealing with this for six months. We haven't been dealing with it for two years, but this particular council, that's the only thing I'll, I'll-
Okay. But when you came into office, as you're sitting here now, that was part of the contract. That's all I'm saying. And may I, just say one more thing, please? I don't care if the gentleman lives in Willamette. I don't care. All right? But all I'm saying, per contract, the Town Manager is supposed to, according to what the Town Charter says, all right? You changed the Town Charter, I understand, but according to the Town Charter, that, that contract is signed saying he will live in Plainville, he or she. And I'm kind of befuddled why there seems to be a-
No, you made it very clear. We understand, yeah.
Okay, no, and I'm thinking of your time, and I thank you for the extra time.
You're welcome. All right, is there anyone else that wishes to address the council? Anyone else wish to address the council? All right, seeing no one, we'll close public comments. Now we can skip old business, since there's nothing there, and we'll move right to item 11, new business. Item number one.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Getteman.
Can I do all three at once, or?
Yeah.
Yes.
Go for it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, A, the 2024 Neighborhood Assistance Act proposal for the Chrisless Center Inc., Heart House Energy Conservation Project in the amount of $51,900; B, the 2024 Neighborhood Assistance Act proposal for the Prudence Crandall Center Inc., Energy Efficiency, Energy Efficiency in the amount of $42,060; and C, the 2024 Neighborhood Assistance Act proposal for the Prudence Crandall Center Inc., Annual Appeal in the amount of $150,000.
I second that motion.
I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number two. Anyone?
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Christopher.
Motion to appropriate $574,925 from General Fund Unassigned Fund Balance Account Number 0100-000-32110-0000 with $204,925 to Interfund Transfer Out Account Number 0100-840-5551-0000 and $370,000 to Interfund Transfer Out Account Number 0100-840-55512-0000.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Well done.
Thank you.
Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number three.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Underwood.
Motion to award bid number 2023-16E, Whiting Street Reconstruction to Colossus Site Work, Berlin, Connecticut, in the amount of $2,279,740.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Certainly looking forward to this one getting done.
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number four.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Getteman.
Motion to award bid 2024-19 Police Department Building Improvements Under Capital Regional Purchasing Council EZIQC Program to Millennium Buildings, Rocky Hill, Connecticut, in the amount of $64,968.
Second.
Motion and a couple seconds. Any comments or questions? Is this, I just, real quick, just, is this the first time we've used the EZIQC? We've used it, because I don't recall it ever coming up before.
We've used it one other time since I've been with the town for the repointing project at the high school, which was ARPA-funded project. But I know other towns have used it successfully before.
Okay. Nope, thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilwoman Tompkins.
Motion to appoint the firm of Clifton Larson Allen to conduct an audit for the Town of Plainville 2024 fiscal year.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number six.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Tompkins.
Motion to set the mill rate for motor vehicles 32.46 and real estate and personal property 32.64, effective July 1st, 2024, for fiscal year 2025.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Any last-minute comments or questions? Thank you for being here, Rob. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number seven.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Tompkins.
Motion to accept the donation of two parcels of land off Field Street with a combined area of 12.7 acres from Danny and Christine Carrier, as shown on the proposed conservation subdivision map, Accessors Lot Number 37-O-11, which includes a 15-foot right-of-way linking the two parcels.
All right, a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number eight.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Hurley.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the tax refunds? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. That includes new business. Is there any other discussions of interest from anyone this evening? Okay. We have taken care of our executive session for the night, so a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Hope to see everyone at the parade on Monday, 9 o'clock. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight.